The time being 6:00 PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the traditional territory acknowledgement followed by a moment of silence. Council, the township of Red Rock hereby acknowledges that we are on the traditional territory of the Robinsons Bureau Treaty, that the land we gather on is home to the Red Rock Indian Band, the Nishnabe and Miti people. Administration advises that there are no amendments to the agenda. Do any members of council wish to make any amendments? Can have a mover and second or for motion to approve the agenda as presented. Council Brand, Council Mayor, all in favor? Action is carried. Are there any declarations of interested disclose? Not seen none. Okay, first up for the proposal tonight will be Melby. Please come up. Welcome.
Thank you.
I know you said you're nervous, but that's okay.
All right.
Just take your time.
So I'll try to look up.
We're no rush.
Excellent. Perfect. So, good evening. My public speaking skills may be a little on the rusty side, so bear with me. I do appreciate the opportunity to tell you my ideas for the Red Rock Arena Restaurant and Snack Bar. A little about myself, I moved here this past April to be closer to my daughter and her family. I couldn't miss another birthday or holiday, so I sold my house and moved here with my dog. And now that I'm here, I would love to be a part of it, helping with local events, running school lunch specials, donating my time and product whenever I possibly can. I grew up in Toronto, moved to Stratford, London, and then to Stratford, and I always said I would go somewhere smaller, and here I am. And honestly, I'm so happy to be in this awesome town. I have thirty-plus years in the hospitality industry, from bartending to serving, cooking, hosting, management, and hotels. Hospitality has been my life. I feel the key to a successful business is warmth, familiarity, and an ability to accommodate and pivot whenever necessary. But mostly it is consistency, consistently delicious food, regular hours, and a place where you always feel welcome. That's what makes a restaurant thrive. Enough about me, we'll move on to the proposal. Then I don't think it's gonna go up there. I'm gonna do it this way. So, thank you for taking the time to join me as I present Melly B's restaurant proposal. I'm excited to share my vision, strategy, and plans for creating a welcoming, community-centered restaurant in Red Rock. Our mission at Melly B's is simple but meaningful, to offer delicious, feel-good food at convenient hours and affordable prices. We're all about creating personalized experiences for every customer and staying actively engaged in the community. We want every guest to leave feeling valued and appreciated. My vision for Red Rock is to build a community hub where people can enjoy amazing food, great conversations, and a sense of belonging. With over thirty years of restaurant experience, plus my certifications like smart serve and food safety, I'm ready to bring the stream to life. Red Rock is uniquely positioned for success with only one direct competitor in the immediate area. And while Nipigan has a few options, limited hours and takeout services leave gaps for sit-down dining. This is an opportunity for Melly B's to serve as the go-to spot for locals and visitors alike. My strategy is centered around connecting with the community and building customer loyalty. From rotating menus and student lunch specials to discounts on pre-ordered takeout, we will aim to meet diverse needs. We'll also utilize tools like QR codes for contactless menus and social media to keep people engaged. Targeted promotions and email campaigns will help us attract customers from other communities. For the first six months, I'll be hands-on managing operations independently with help from my family. We'll emphasize local partnerships for products like coffee and jams. And once we've established ourself, I plan to hire local staff and scale up operations, ensuring a seamless experience for all. Our menu is all about variety and comfort. Breakfast options will range from classic breakfast to eggs benedicts to senior-friendly meals. For lunch, we'll offer hearty favorites like pulled pork and smash burgers. And dinner features will be homemade lasagna, schnitzel, slow-cooked ribs, along with weekly features to keep things fresh and exciting. Starting up will involve obtaining licenses, sourcing local products, and securing financing through a small business loan. Revenue will come from dine-in and takeout services with additional opportunities through events and entertainment. We'll allocate a portion of the budget for marketing and maintain a fund for unforeseen expenses. Our immediate priorities include securing licensing, financing, and supplier relationships. Marketing will begin early with social media and email campaigns rolling out ahead of our grand opening. We also plan to collaborate with local musicians, hopefully, to get some entertainment nights, adding vibrancy to our restaurant and community. Thank you for considering Melly B's. This proposal is not just about a restaurant. It's about creating a place that brings people together and celebrates the spirit of Red Rock. I'm open to questions and feedback, and I look forward to the opportunity to make this vision a reality.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Council Mayor?
Thanks, thanks for presentation and for the documents. I appreciate everything. Just a couple of questions. I'm just gonna ask general questions to both presentations tonight. So I'm just looking for kitchen experience, any direct training for cooking, culinary arts?
I don't have a culinary arts degree, no, but I have, I did spend the summer cooking at the lodge for all the hotel guests, or the guests. I do have my kitchen safety certificate, and I have, I'm a pretty good cook, just to check. I have a pretty, I have confidence in my cooking skills, more than my talking skills.
That's okay, that's good. And then I guess my second question is plans for decor in the area?
I actually, since I've been here, I've been taking so many Red Rock pictures. And I spoke to my daughter today about just going and buying a bunch of frames and taking the pictures I've taken locally and just put them in the restaurant. That was my first idea, anyways.
Can I keep going, or? All right, thanks. And definitely, so, because it is, the building is definitely publicly funded, subsidized. The rent is subsidized, so I'm looking to see if there's gonna be any seniors discount, soups of the days, weekly specials.
Yeah, absolutely. I plan on doing a soup and salad, actually, of the day, like a different soup and salad. And then looking at what it looks like to make almost all of the meals in a senior portion. So that, you know, nobody, and you don't have to be a senior to have it. If you just want a senior's portion, you can have it.
Right. And then my last question, last two questions, I'm gonna add catering plans. Do you have a plan to cater us through the facility?
Eventually, potentially, but that isn't immediate in my mindset. I kinda wanna focus on one thing and do it right, and then move on. Like, I would like to do some baking and maybe sell some baked goods before I head to catering. But eventually, the, yes, if I have enough staff and get that far, sure.
All right. My last question is beer. Always about beer. If you watch council meetings, I usually... So, are you planning on any tap, any drafts at any point in time to?
I would love, that's actually my forte, is like bartended for thirty years and managed a bar in Stratford for twenty. I know beer a lot, and yes, I wanna get my license right away, and putting something local on tap would be a great idea, I'm sure. Like, I don't know, I feel like I would just feel that out amongst the customers. What would they like to see and kind of?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Council Brand?
So, in your marketing plan, you talk about email blasts and billboards on the highway, social media. But how are you going to get in touch with those people who are not on social media?
Locally here, I plan on getting some flyers out door-to-door is my plan. Of course, you know, highway signs down the road, but email blasts, I'm just gonna go to local businesses, like, all the way outside, half an hour. Try to, you know, even if you go as far as Thunder Bay, we do have tournaments, people might not know we're here, and they'll eat before they get here. So knowing that we're here is good, too.
I just sometimes feel that the seniors or people who aren't on social media get left out, so.
Absolutely. No, my plan is to go door-to-door with a whole pack of flyers, yeah.
So, and you say here in your operational plan that for six months, you're going to just be on your own.
Do my best, yeah.
Yeah, and you've got family backup. Do you see there being any challenges with you doing it just on your own?
Absolutely, there's gonna be challenges, but I hope to, like, confront them, and as they come, I do have two local people that do wanna come work for me. But unfortunately, I don't, well, it's not unfortunate, I don't wanna say here's twenty hours till I have twenty hours. If I go into it and it's busy, then my kids are there to help me until I get it sorted out. And the first week, I'm open, actually, like, if it was to happen in January, I would have a lot of support at that time coming to that.
I think that was it for my two questions.
Council, no any questions?
Thank you. I think just one that I wondered, sometimes, you know, at the beginning with business, just starting out, it can be a little bit tough, and I just wondered, have you planned for that? It could be a little bit slow at the beginning until you're able to get out there and have people out at least the first time?
Yeah, absolutely. I was fortunate enough to be able to buy my home when I bought here straight out, so I don't really have to worry about a mortgage. So I can look at, you know, if there is a few slow months, and that's why I do wanna do it by myself. I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring someone and promise them something, and then, like, if I fail, I fail on my own. I don't wanna drag someone down with me that might have another job now, or, but, not that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? So mine are quite similar to everybody else, and just, I'm not concerned, but I mean, working on your own for the first little bit, I probably am gonna say that anybody going into that restaurant is going to be busy.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the, you know, if it's run right, that recreation center and the restaurant, just, it's booming, so you'll have great clientele. So I like the fact that you would look towards working with local partners and sourcing that, that type of service from them, so that's great. What else? Also, liquor license, you would be looking into that. We have a lot of bowlers that like to partake in a few beverages for endurance bowling, so that would help.
Absolutely.
And also, they support the restaurant itself, so I don't have any other concerns. I know just word of mouth, a restaurant going in there, so marketing's going to be, I don't think it's gonna be that hard for you. I don't think anyone going in needs to, to put up, like, street signs and highway signs, not yet, right? But I think your initial plan, I think it's really good. People like home-cooked food, so I look forward to that. So, thank you. I don't have any other questions? No, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay, next up, we have the proposal from Amber's Restaurant. So, as I said earlier, we're not all the greatest public speakers, so take your time, no rush. Your mic is on already, so.
I was glad to hear Mel say that earlier, too, because I was coming to say, oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, so that's okay, just take your time.
I do have a presentation. Am I able to get up, move around, or do I have to be close to the mic?
You have to be close to the mic.
Okay.
Unless you wanna walk around with it in your hand.
Yeah, that works.
Yep, as long as it can, you can, no, you just carry the whole thing, yep.
Well, this is our idea for Amber's Restaurant. Next slide. So, welcome to Amber's Restaurant, where every meal is a moment, every bite is a celebration, and every guest leaves as family. We want Amber's to become the heart of Red Rock, a place to relax, connect with others, and to enjoy great food. Amber's brings together the rustic charm of sitting around a wood fireplace and enjoying dishes inspired by the generations before us from our community. We plan to bring the fresh ideas to these traditional recipes as well. Amber's will be a family-owned business built with heart and passion deeply rooted in Red Rock. During the process of making plans for Amber's, my fourteen-year-old son, Ryder, started showing an interest in cooking. So we decided that the party should just like the Parker family, except we cook instead of saying, might have aged myself there a little bit. Talking about my family, let me give you a quick introduction. For us. Also, next slide. Well, this here is my fourteen-year-old son. He just started high school this year at Naprock High School. My four-year-old daughter, she's also just started school at St. Hillary's. This lovely lady here is my wife, she's been here for twelve years. We are both proud of our community and have worked hard to serve it. My wife has been in nursing in the hospital for the last seven years. And myself have served with the Red Rock Fire Department for the last six. Our family is excited, create new relationships and serve our community in a new and exciting way. Okay. I've introduced to you my family, now let me introduce to you the rest of the team before I get to myself. We've already talked about how much I love the community. With that being said, the only person that I brought onto the team so far that isn't family also has deep roots here. I'm gonna introduce you Lucy Duboe. Most of you may remember her as the intelligent, kind-hearted woman from when she owned Red Pebbles. Lucy has built herself a reputation for great food, warm and welcoming place to pull up and a chair to stay well. We plan this. To stay well. We plan as a team to bring that and so much more into Amber's. We both have the same dedication and love and expertise for cooking that we can't wait to share with our community. Last is myself, Ryan Thomas Pollock. There isn't much that I can tell you that I haven't already discussed today or has been on slides. I'm sure that you've already seen. But what I can tell you is, yes, I've worn many different hats throughout my lifetime, but my favorite hat to wear is the cook hat. I love cooking for my family. But I also really enjoy making extras and delivering them around town to friends and family, coworkers, or their feedback. I've been known to deliver all kinds of things around town. Lucy and I can't wait to bring our combined passion for the community through what we love to do most. Of course, all feedback is always welcome. Next slide please. At Amber's, we're excited to bring together the community and their families over a delicious home-cooked meal. Side please. Our menu, we plan on having all the snack shack staples such as burgers, pizzas, wings, fries, cookies, all the things people have come to love and have at the arena. But we also want to have a daily special soup, or for a weekly upscale special, that would be something like a steak or a seafood or a pasta. We also want to, as mentioned before, have a seniors discount. Because seniors make a very large portion of the population base for the restaurant, especially in the first five or six hours of operations. Next slide please. One of the first things that we wanna set up is wanna set up a phone app and a website. We will cover the domain hosting, all the design content, it'll be clean, mobile-friendly, easy to find all the information that you need. We'll take care of all the SEO operations, which gets sort of a little technical, but. Next slide please. We're going to establish an active presence on Facebook and TikTok. We'll be creating business accounts for that, so we can reach out to a more modernized advertising landscape. A lot of people are doing the Facebook and TikTok thing, where they're finding out information these days. And that way, we can engage with our audience. Next slide please. When we set up the app, we'll also be set up to take out, take out orders, and we'll be selecting an online platform, such as Square Coaster, Chiao Now, which will integrate seamlessly into our website. That way, everyone can just grab out their phone whenever they're ready for dinner, pop in what exactly what they want. They'll be given a time to come grab it, and they're ready to go, they go south. We would like to expand to seeing what delivery options are available. Of course, that'll take a little time of getting a little landscape, and how often will the questions come up and that sort of thing. Next slide please. We talked about building an online presence. Social media, always picked these days. We want to engage local communities, we want to local partnerships with nearby businesses, schools, offer discount for local workers, or create special deals for local events. Perhaps something like the Red Rock Pope Festival. We want to use promotions to drive traffic, such as special offers, first-time diners, frequent flyers, family nights, date night specials, senior specials, these kinds of things. One of our key tactics, however, is going to be word of mouth. We're not a small town. Everybody knows, everybody, everybody talks. Best advertisement we can really do is with people talking about the food. On behalf of Lucy, my family, and myself, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our vision for the community to you. Remember, come for the fire, stay for the flavor. The fires are always bringing it ever. And was there any other questions?
Hey, Council Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. So I'm gonna just go through and ask a couple of questions there again. So with regards to the decor of the restaurant, what are you planning on doing in there?
Well, of course, it has to be approved first, but I'd like to do a small renovation. We'd like to see about putting in floating flooring in the dining area. Perhaps some paint and some touch-ups to the countertop, bar top, however you'd like to call that. Of course, that all has to be approved first, but I don't perceive that being too much of an issue.
So a bit of an investment is gonna be made into?
Ballpark right now, I'm looking to do it, which I'm already made to understand that would be on my dime with no grants or anything like that. I'm looking for about a $2,000 to $3,000 investment just to make the place look nice again, bring it back to being modern, warm, friendly.
Right. And then as far as cooking goes, is there any formal training, culinary school, or?
I did, I did not go to culinary school. I was trained classically. I've been cooking since I was fourteen, fifteen years old. I was appointed head chef in many camps. I was camp manager in many camps. I spent almost fifteen years working away from home, working remote mines, hydro lines, Ballard Project that came through here not too many years ago. So quite a few years cooking for quite a vast array of people. Some of our camps were as small as ten people, some of them were upwards of 2,000 people.
Awesome. And then, so again, back to the whole, they sold, it's heavily subsidized. So with regards to some seniors discounts and portion crawl, I believe you mentioned that in the presentation, there's gonna be discounts. And with regards to catering, is that something you're looking at doing?
Hundred percent.
Catering, yeah.
One of the first things we wanna do once we get a chance to pull the trigger, so to speak, we'll look at our catering license, liquor license, and take it from there.
All right, and the last question, beer-related taps, beer taps, is there any plan at any point in having craft beers or taps put in?
Taps, yes. I have to spend a number of years bouncing bars in Thunder Bay, so I've got to meet the liquor inspectors and the guys that do the taps and all that kind of stuff and create relationships with them. And I've already talked to them, they are more than happy to come put in taps once we get a chance to do so.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Council Brand?
So I'm wondering about student lunches. Will you have specials for the students during the week while they're at school?
Yes, I, Dan Pierce has been a local business in town for a long time. By no means do I say I wanna try and take business away from Dan Pierce. However, I know at lunchtime at the high school, there's a hundred and thirty-six kids in the school or something to that effect. I would like to create some options specifically for the students, so that they have some options to go to instead of the same place day in, day out. I'm sure the food is absolutely wonderful there, but the same thing over and over again gets old.
And then a question that I had asked previously, you do a lot of social media. How will you attract or inform those people who are not on social media?
That one, we have a couple of ideas, but we've not been able to talk to anybody yet. One of the first things we wanna do is do the firing with the local post office. They do say that they do it. So I'd like to create something like that. There's four hundred and thirty-six homes in Red Rock, and from what I was found, some people, ninety-five percent of them have internet. So I think mail and word of mouth will be the two ways we reach out to the segment of the population that maybe isn't online as much.
Thank you.
Council, no?
Thank you for that. Just a couple of questions. I noticed for the target market, I saw it was indicated twenty-five, ages twenty-five to forty. And I just wondered, given the demographics within Red Rock, is your focus going to be primarily the people in Red Rock, or are you looking to bring people in from elsewhere? Well, I believe we're gonna be bringing people from elsewhere, locally close places like Nipigan and Dorian and Hurkett. I believe the demographics that we're going to cater to, as I said before, the first few hours of the day will be more targeted towards seniors. The breakfast special people, the working people that wanna come out for a quick breakfast. And then lunchtime will be more targeted towards the working people, the ones that wanna just come in, quick lunch, gone. And dinnertime will be more targeted towards, well, pretty much everybody in Red Rock, but the family-oriented, come out, have dinner. Or a married couple wants to come out and have dinner and not have to cook that evening. So, it's kind of widespread on the same day. Okay. Well, three different game plans for the same day. Okay, thank you. And just one other question. You mentioned here in the original submission, a little bit about funding requirements, and you make mention of potentially a small business loan or Fednor grant, and I just wondered, where are you at in that process, and is you moving on contingent upon a Fednor grant or loan? Nope, not at all. I was able to put together about $75,000 from our personal savings. If there was to be a grant from Fednor, that would be wonderful, but it's not, we're not relying on a grant. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, kind of same questions as before. You do have some help, right, if you were to be the successful candidate? So I'm assuming you won't have any trouble with startup or your plans if you were, you know, to get the health unit inspection, get all that in order, you'd be ready to go beginning of January, end of January, however long that takes?
Yes, I've already reached out to Andrew, and he's willing to come out as soon as we're operational to come out and give us our listing.
Okay, and also, you're looking to get a liquor license. You would apply for that?
Yes, specifically for beer and wine.
Okay.
Harder stuff, I don't know if that's the right environment for it, and maybe, there may be a call for it, but to start it, sure, it'd be beer and wine.
Okay. And now that we have programming running at the Rex Center, so there is lots of kids, so you would be catering to families. You know, if they're there for hockey or bowling, we do have adult bowling, no youth bowling yet, but, you know, that's down the road. So that's something that you may be interested or you would cater to?
Yes, that's one of the things we've considered. We consider putting in a glass fridge. Something that we can have some pre-made options for the sports enthusiast, someone just wants to grab a sub sandwich and be gone, or off to bowling. So I think we're gonna put that up, and in the daytime, we're gonna use that for pastries and baking, go with your coffee. And then later on in the day, we would probably make some pre-made options like subs, sandwiches, pre-made salads, that sort of thing.
Okay, and you also had mentioned that you wanted to do some renovations. Now, is that going to delay the opening of the restaurant?
No.
Okay.
I would need, for the renovations I would like to do, it'd be forty-eight hours.
Okay. All based on getting approval from the township?
Absolutely.
If that was to, if that was to be the case. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, council has heard from both parties. We can discuss before we vote, or would we like to go right to a vote? This is up to, up to us. This is our first time actually doing this process with multiple bids for the recreation center. Any concerns that we have? Any other questions that might have popped up now that? Council Mayor?
Yeah, I definitely thank everybody. Yeah, I definitely thank everybody for applying for, for this, and, uh, there was multiple times, like, there was multiple, uh, um, documents put in, and, and they were great, and, and the effort was put forward, and, uh, I definitely, tonight's meeting was great, and, uh, I, I, I think I'm, I'm ready to make a decision, decision.
Okay, so by a show of hands, uh, please raise your hand and vote for Amber's Restaurant. By a show of hands, please raise your hand for a vote for Mel B's. Okay, can I have a mover and second or promotion to enter into an agreement with Mel B for the twenty-twenty-five leasing of the Recreation Center Snack Bar? Counselor Brand, Counselor Mill? All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, next item on the, uh, next item, uh, is confirming bylaw, confirm proceedings at council. We have a mover and second or promotion to pass the bylaw. Counselor Brand, Counselor Muir? All in favor? Motion's carried. Time being six thirty-two, no further business to attend to, uh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.